At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, June twenty eight, twenty two meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors. Mike Skyness and myself, with the county supervisors, Lisa Smith, and Bjorn Beck from the auditor's office, and Luen Goldfeach, our administrative assistant. First item on our agenda this morning is my pausing, Jackson County.
The first thing I have is a driveway permit for Josh. It's in Tabor Township, Section twenty five, this residential drive off of three hundred and twenty street. It needs to say that since we've asked for it to approve them.
Hello.
Motion to approve the presidential entry permit for Josh Gatlin, all those in favor? Motion carried.
Okay, the next, we had a request from Travis and Tia Woodhurst to change the Class C gates on five eighty fourth Avenue. And we, you should have it in your packet.
Is that one that we just, last year or a year and a half ago, was that out east here?
It's down by Civil War.
Oh.
Yeah, and we did it in nineteen. It's got a bridge on it.
That's the one I walked. And I suggested that we put big rock on it to begin with. And then we also told the landowners that we don't have, longer had responsibility for that bridge, correct?
Uh, no, we still have responsibility for the bridge. We don't get rid of that when we, when we create a Class C road, we still have the bridge.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I thought it was in the living room. Very much of a bridge.
But this doesn't affect the bridge, this is on the south end.
It's on the south end.
They want to move the south gates north. A little over twelve hundred feet from where they are now. Uh, they want to build a house up in there, they bought some property and they want to build a house.
So from the south end.
So we kind of brought up.
There's a house right at the point where it turns to a level.
Yeah, there's, the gates are right, right by that north driveway.
Right, right there, yeah.
And they want to go.
Yeah, we can see him, that's good.
Yeah.
And they want to go north.
Okay, now drag it down, how far they want to go more anyway.
So if you take a left on that drive, does that take you back to that log cabin?
Over to the, to the west. That's quite a, that's quite a house to the west.
So.
So.
Yeah, right, just around this corner, uh, is where they want to put it, right in it. Towards the bottom of the screen.
And what secondary roads is take on this?
I guess we don't, we don't have a problem with moving, moving the gates and reclassifying that as a Class B road.
Place to turn around down there with the snow bomb?
We don't plow Class B roads, that's probably owners issue.
So it's going from a C to a B?
It goes from a C to a B.
And so we really don't maintain the Bs either.
We blade them once a year or so.
So it'd be the same as.
We just.
Off the Belli Cascade or up north, the past golf course, the same type of classification.
Great, wow, yeah, it's a little different north of the golf course, so that's actually Class A road up through. Yeah, we just did one, uh, over by Teeters Bridge off of. E seventeen.
Oh, that was the cruise.
Yeah, they built a house on a B road, they paid, paid for rock to be hauled in. We haul the rock on, they paid a free versus for the rock cost. To gravel up to their house, but it's still a B road and we don't.
So they could possibly do the same thing, if we change it, they could pay for the rock and we hold it.
Right, and we, I told them that, that we don't, it won't bring it up to Class A, and if they want a rock, they could request it.
How much rock would it take to do that? Twelve hundred two?
Yeah, twelve hundred, that's about what we did for the cruise people there, I think that was about fifteen hundred dollars for that.
I don't know who give them the, the estimate on their proposed taxes, but yeah. Okay, what did they build it back there? Are they considered a whole farm, or what are they considering?
Yeah, I'm not sure, it's, yeah, it's a little bit high. So I guess we'd like direction from the board, if they're in favor of doing this, we'll put together a resolution to, to change the location they need.
I mean, I don't have a problem, other than I know exactly what it looks like, because I actually walked that road after rain that time, and there was, really, that wasn't that bad of a.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Well, are you, you're approving the go ahead, is that what?
We just want direction. We'll bring a resolution in next week.
I would say that you should go ahead and give the resolution.
Okay, we'll do that then.
Do you, do you need action to go ahead?
I don't think so. And the next thing I have is a, a utility permit for the Coca-Cola Valley. It's in Butler Township, Section twenty nine, uh, for new homes, let's be, there. The address is nineteen fifty-three, two twenty-five, twenty-fifth street. They're gonna be boring underneath side two twenty-fifth street with the service line into the house. We asked for it to approve that.
Someone wishing a second to approve the Coca-Cola Valley electric. Utility permit, all those in favor?
And, uh, the other thing I have, I guess, is a update on bridge. And it's going pretty good out there, we should be, we're gonna pour the, the bridge deck tomorrow, so. Well, along the way, and then they're, they'll be working on, on the road on the north side, soon as trader can get the rain out on the other side, then work on the other side.
Are we working on a bridge somewhere on a dead end?
Well, we've got one that we're gonna do this fall.
It's been approved, I mean, you, it's on the plan and, and where's that?
Five seventy-six, uh, avenue.
Is that down Civil Way two?
Yeah.
Yeah. Does that turn into a level B then?
Yeah. Actually, the, the one thirteenth across the top is a level C road. But the bridge is just off Highway fifty-two on five seventy-six.
No. You just got any issues with, with right of ways or anything else?
Well, we're working on getting in agreement with the property owner on the west side, so we can put a run around in there, because there is three houses back in there, so we have to provide access to them.
Or even, yeah, for emergency, yeah.
Well, I mean, going back to this woodhurst, they're asking for this to be a regular road in their letter.
Right.
That we maintain.
Right, this guy go back to level B first, and then it's up to the board if they want to upgrade it to level A, we haven't in the past. The first thing would be to get the gates moved.
Do it in stages.
Yes.
Okay.
We've got, I think there's four houses that are in level Bs. They've requested that we upgrade them, we haven't done that in the past.
Okay, I get a question, maybe just off the wall. If there is a train tracks going through and there's a residence or something on one side, and that's the only way you can get to it. Can that train, do you know any regulations, can that train stop? On that crossway for X amount of time?
I'm not aware of the regulations on that.
Is that happening?
No, but I got stuck in a, on the crossing of a train for over an hour, and I was at the track. When they just started flashing, I thought, shit, I shouldn't I? I did not, but I waited over an hour, and I'm thinking, I know there's holes back behind there. If there was an emergency or a fire or ambulance call, what's, what's protocol or what's?
You probably had the right stop.
It never moved, I never moved, it never moved. It was interesting.
Had to be quite a wait.
It was. So I even called, there were, there were actually a business on the other side of the tracks, and it wasn't, it wasn't even in Iowa, but it was up there. I called the business, I says this, just so you know, I'm here, don't shut doors, for one take, but, um, is this normal? And they said, usually ten minutes or so, you know, a little over now.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, we have visitors and citizens, and I believe, John, you wanted to address and talk to the board?
Yeah, I was just gonna bring you in where we're at. Basically, uh, I want, after meeting, if you can stop out on my truck, I'm outside a gas meter out there. I want you to look, the, when we were looking at the five percent versus the three percent, we thought that was a sand blast amount. But it was actually the dye amount, so I want to take one look at the lighter dye to see if that's where we want to be.
Okay.
Uh, so if you want to stop out afterwards, after the meeting, and take a look, I got mine back in my truck in the sunlight.
Okay.
A lot of the gratings there, uh, been working with Mike and AJ to approve that we can go up and grade onto his land, so we can get, we can get rid of that retaining wall. And we'd be responsible for just mowing the west side of his drive there. So I'm putting a letter together to maintenance to get our land to, uh, take a look at, and then I'll get in touch, I think Sarah's already working on a temporary easement over there for us. But that's a tremendous savings, because everything was in the project. And where I had calls and prices of eighty-two hundred thousand dollars, so it's nice to get rid of that, so I'm.
Yeah, because I was surprised when I saw that they were hauling that dirt away, when I thought we had talked about getting permission to, to do this slope.
Will be more dirt than out of there.
And, oh, there's been a lot of dirt taken out of there.
Yes, there has, and I'm meeting with Clocky, I'm gonna be on site for next two or three days. And then, you know, as needed, you know, I don't want to run that cost up, but, uh, I, I know a kind of, the building pad called for a two foot over excavation. But then Spexide called for one foot over excavation on the paving portion. But I was out there yesterday, and there's quite a bit of dirt out of there.
Yes, there is a lot of dirt.
But he.
So I talked to him too, and he said they lifted up six inches higher than what was specified. Maybe you didn't get the one foot, that might be for the two foot.
Yeah, we didn't have to take the second foot out of the building pad, because we had testing agency come out and test.
Okay.
So the, after we get down past it, a boring is only good for that six or eight inches that they do boring. So once we got down past it, there wasn't as much, uh, bad soil, so I mean, we should be under the amount to be hauled out to begin with, but, uh, I just thought, you know, I was looking at that, and I looked up a load of meat, you know, the dang dry. So I just want to get together, and you wanted to get together with me also. And I'll get Alex out there this week, and we can kind of at least plot that out, you know, what we need to do up there. And, uh, that way we can start that grading portion of it.
So, you know, there's a parking lot up there, it would sure be nice if part of that could go away to get this, or can we move the parking lot further south?
We won't have to move the parking lot if you slope the thirty foot back.
He had drew out a, a, two different scenarios. And then we had sent it to AJ on Friday, and then he said he was just on Monday, which he did. And he agreed to the, the bigger slope, so the, the more gradual slope that we could use his property to do that, but of course he wants a temporary easement from us to show, when we're working on his property, that we're on our own or liable or whatever.
The three options were the retaining wall, which would be eight to ten foot tall, and then start decreasing towards the street, which meant we'd need a fence at the top of it. So that is terrible maintaining your trees and everything growing up through it. And then the other option was a two to one slope, and then rock the bank. But we'd still have to go ten foot under his property, and, uh, I didn't like that idea, if he's trying to mow up there, you know, somebody tipped up or something. And the other option was come thirty foot back end of the property and start that grade down and just minimize that grade. So we may have to just park it less, so, I mean.
He's been real agreeable, as you look at the north side of his property, there's a slope up there toward the office area too, that's about, some of that looks pretty steep up there.
It does look steep, and, uh, I don't know why we took that much out, because that could have remained steep if we don't have parking lot there, but uh, one of the things that we're also dealing with is there appears to be like a twelve inch storm coming out of the property. So, uh, take a look at that. But, uh, anyways, uh, I have talked to the contractors, I want to meet with contractors. Uh, as far as starting the footings, footings, they're gonna start sometime in July. Uh, meeting, uh, Brian McDonald today, which is the plumber, to get him set up, make sure he's set up. Uh, the water main is in within five foot of the building line. Uh, the sewer mains in within five foot of the building line, but only out to the edge of our property. Because that is a detour for the West Platte Street, Platte Street project. They don't want us going in and making the tap until, uh, you know, later this fall, October, November. Uh, which really doesn't cause us an issue. I need to get together with Joel Wood, I believe he's doing the building for you and Mark. And, uh, they were together, because we gotta bring that sewer main from the existing building over to the, the main going out.
Yeah, that's all stubbed out up there, but yeah.
Yeah, so Joel and Clocky got together, and they got the Y in there for it. Had lowered the main a little bit, which, uh, isn't a problem, had lowered the main a little bit to get from the steel building over to the uh, main and maintain the fall. And then I need to talk to Joel and just make sure he'll probably run a one inch line, you know, PVC line over to the building, and I'll just have him do that, probably seeing that he's working with you guys on that. Uh, Mark's gonna take some tables and stuff over there for me, so I can work out of that shed this week. He's gonna take two tables, about fifteen chairs, and then the third table and chair for plans and stuff.
Do we have any sort of plans that we can just keep there, tape them rates?
I, I, I got them, Mike.
Okay. Is, when you talk about using that, utilizing that building here, we didn't partition that office area off yet, correct?
I haven't been in it.
Andy, oh.
I don't need a partitioned up, honestly.
Okay.
I'd rather have it open right at the moment to get, uh, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of material, I've already had calls in regards to putting copper piping and stuff in there, because they don't want to store that outside. Uh, the rebar is on site, ready for the footings, uh, steel's been approved. We're just waiting on the color selection, I do have all the blockouts for the precast ready. That way, if they get an opening in bed date for November, then, you know, we, we hopefully we move that up a little bit, that four D though.
I, I, I understand that you store a fair amount of things in there, but we built that building a little larger than we expected, so I didn't know if there's any room, extra room in there. If we thought we were gonna change our agreement as far as storing our terrestrial and moving here or not, I don't know.
I think it's fine where it's at, because the cost to move it would. Well, and we do a rough estimate on that, but it would cost a lot to move it and then move it into the building again.
What's that?
Call our desk and all the stuff we took out of the hospital.
You know, that's your building, I, I'll make arrangements, I mean, you're gonna have like sixty, seventy, three hundred pound frames coming in, you know, sometime in November, and then you got doors, and then you got cabbie, you got toilets, it, it's a lot of material.
I guess our thought process was the partition part that offer, like an office area, the bathroom area, is that we could heat that a lot reasonably, we're, I mean, we don't intend to have that whole building being sixty-five degrees year round, you know? That's, it's.
I don't know what you have planned.
It's storage, but it don't have to be, it can be fifty, but it don't have to be sixty-five and seventy. But if we had an off, a nice office area where the bathroom is on that corner, then of course you could keep that, use that for your office, you know?
I don't necessarily need that, because I need to. You know, we'll be out in sight, you know, ninety percent of the time, I just need a place to mark up plans, keep ass built, meet with the contractors. Because you're gonna be dragging mud in and out of there. Fifty's better than fifteen below, you know? Uh, as far as if you're just eating the whole thing, I mean, I, I'm not looking for, you know, to walk around in underwear and a t-shirt, I'm not.
No, but we're, I mean, I think even moving forward, that's what we were looking at, weren't we?
Well, eventually, yes.
I mean, uh, most places, and I'm just throwing this out, you know, they have their command centers, and, you know, if you take your, if you have an emergency, you take your equipment out and bring it back in, you want it to at least melt off.
Yeah.
You know, and stuff, so, uh, no, that's, I, I didn't know what you were putting in there at this time, but, uh, I mean, it'd be nice.
I don't think there's anything in there now, I know, I don't. Have you talked to the sheriff about the colors? Being here?
Uh, he, he took a look at them this morning, so I told him you were gonna take a look at them, I gotta meet with Andrew and him. Uh, we have to go through all this metals and keying schedule and everything for the detention doors and the equipment, how's the colors here, I got, everybody's screaming, you know, I need car picked out, I need this picked out, because prices are increasing, and, you know, I just chased my tail after what, you know, I stopped one fire out behind me, and they had two more built behind me, so, uh, mainly I want steel and everything, and that's all been approved, so, I mean, all the stuff should be coming at times, so.
So with the shed, if we, uh, gonna put some in there, do we need to get a gas line run in there? That come, I'm just thinking ahead.
Well, I did talk to electric company, and, uh, originally the transformer is way behind the building. And, uh, there's gonna be a lot less cost and a lot better. Basically, we're trying to trade up, you know, that sixteen or eighteen thousand dollars that we're gonna have to pay the city to get in there, based on new sedge. What I'd like to, what I want to do, and I've talked to the architect and engineers, and I've talked to Chris, uh, and I'm over at the city, is move that uh, into the grassy area up by the vehicle Sallyport. That way, they can get that transfer, uh, temporary transformer in there right away. Plus, we have a shorter run to get over to the steel building. And then the price will probably increase a little bit, you know, and the contractors and for the secondaries to get into the building. But we're just trading dollars from the city to the contractor. And it's gonna make things a lot better, and, uh, also it will get, so it's not so congested or by the most generator. So I'm working on that with City and Brad and them.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I, I just wanted to get up here and keep you guys updated, because I imagine you're wondering what is going on, well, you know, the dirt works done. Clocky wasn't supposed to be here until July, so, I mean, he's ahead of schedule, but, uh, uh, I get a hold of contractors, and I want to get it from their schedule, so we know.
We'll touch base here when we're finished. Come out and look at the samples.
Yeah, myself, or you text me, I'm gonna remove some stuff down in the damage. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Laura's on.
Good morning.
At this time, we're joined by Laura Cartsonson with the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you for the opportunity to address your, I'm representing the Preservation Commission, we're asking for a fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget amendment of two thousand dollars. We'd like to use that for funding for a professional services contract with Heritage Works of Dubuque to evaluate the insane asylum at the Jackson County Pork Farm. We are focusing as part of our work plan this year on historic properties owned by the county, and we began with the insane asylum. Because this property is listed on the National Register, but it's also one of the sites that's a partner with Silos and Smokestacks National Heritage Area. And due to its condition, based on comments from the Director of Partnerships when she was here in October, we could be in danger of losing that partnership status. We'd certainly like to maintain it, because that makes us eligible for grants, and we also get publicity and it's part of the promotion of tours of sites in the Silos and Smokestacks National Heritage Area website and visitor's guide. Our main concern is that the building needs to be re, remain open and accessible to the public. And currently, we fear there's some liability for continued tours due, due to the condition of the building. What we'd like to do is see if we can find some funding from other resources that we can leverage with, um, this property, so that we can again make public access safe and convenient. So to do that, the commission felt we needed an evaluation of the site conditions. We need to get an estimate of the cost to make the site safe for public tours. And we wanted to identify what types of funding would be available to help us with this work. So the commission voted to retain the services of Heritage Works up to two thousand dollars, and we provided you with a proposal for those services. Those would be provided in partnership with F E H Design Architects. The consultants would provide a planning level evaluation, and that would help both the commission and the Board of Supervisors understand the site conditions, the costs, and possible outside funding that we could use to make the necessary repairs and improvements. Our proposal is that the work would begin after July one and be completed by September thirtieth of this year. We have worked with the county auditor's office, they recommended that the commission request a two thousand dollar budget amendment for FY twenty-two, twenty-three for the contract with Heritage Works. The commission currently has a balance of just over twenty-seven hundred dollars in its current FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget, so we have a wash with the cost, no additional expense to the county. We would respectfully request the board's approval of this budget amendment and the contract, be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
So there is money left in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget yet, but does that carry over?
That's why we're asking for a budget.
Okay, so what's in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
I believe our annual budget is about thirty-two hundred dollars.
We don't really need.
We're looking to use the money in the current year budget, I guess, as a carryover, because we have four, I believe it's four county-owned sites, so we're looking to come back to you with proposals similar to this one to try to understand what do we need to make these, uh, buildings safer access, uh, keep them well-maintained, and how can we do that with leveraging state and federal grants?
What are your other properties?
Um, the next one on our list in priority would be Mill Rock School, we've done some assessment as a commission, but we're looking to, um, do that one next.
Okay.
That one needs a chimney cap, and the bell tower needs to be fixed, it's leaking. I know the insane asylum, all three doors need to be replaced. There's probably some tough pointing that needs to be done there too, and a good cleanup. We did, there's, and a few other things in there in past years for tours, so. And what other ones are on there on your list?
And what other ones are on there on your list?
I'm trying to think, the other, I think the other two are, um, the Canton School, I believe, is a county, is county-owned, and then the, is it Dias? Is that correct pronunciation? Dias Homestead?
That's north of Bellevue, or west of Bellevue?
Yes.
That one needs a lot of work. Stonework is in real good shape, but it's got a metal roof. The basement needs to be filled, it's got a really deep basement when they put that retention pond or whatever. It's wet in there, so it needs to be filled with gravel and then put a floor in it to stabilize it. We did put new windows in it uh, four or five years ago, I believe. I mean, it's weather tight, and it's just, it's a mess. Well, I guess that's where I'm at. I'm interested in if there's money available or grants available for some of this stuff, because I mean, we do this year after year, the same with, with the Mill, Big Mill Creek Homestead. And I said new windows and it sits there and rots now. You know, we, we fix these old buildings up, we're trying to build a new one. Um, but then how do we maintain and preserve them older buildings? Or in there, if they're in a rural setting, and what do we intend to do with them? I, I, I mean, I like that as asylum, I like it sitting there, we all know it needs work. You, it's gonna make it really hard and accessible to make it open to the public somehow. I mean, there's never gonna be any revenue off of it, correct?
I doubt it. I can't imagine what the revenue would be.
The last time they had that tour in it, that was a combination with the Andrew Dale on that. Yeah. Is the Andrew Dale on part of this? No, that's.
City, yeah.
I'll tell you, stuck. When the reasonable amount of time and effort in that building too, you know, I mean, what do you do? I, I, I like them, I mean, I like to see them, but I don't know that I wanna throw a bunch of money at them.
And that's exactly why we think we need the expertise of consultants like Heritage Works and F E H Design. We, we need to understand what do we need to make these buildings weather tight, watertight, still accessible to the public, still something that provides uh, us with an opportunity to tell the story of Jackson County history through those physical sites and those buildings. Um, and so if we understand the proper way to maintain these buildings and we use other people's money to help us do that, that state and those state and federal funds, uh, that's what the commission is really, uh, interested in doing, understanding what is it we need to do? What are the general range of costs, and then what are the opportunities to leverage? Um, in some cases, in-kind, uh, donation of time from commissioners with some county funds that are already in our budget to actually leverage additional money to really start to make a difference. So these buildings aren't a liability for the county, but they are in fact a resource.
So I guess that's where I'm at too, is there not as many as there used to be, of course, of people that restore these older buildings. I mean, Larry's a good example, and you know, there was, there was other individuals that did this kind of stuff that know exactly what that building needs. Of course, we know it needs new doors, and it, and it's a roost lake, and the roof's gotta be fixed, so. I don't, I just, do we need somebody's expert opinion for that? I guess if everybody thinks so, I'm okay.
Well, I, I'll, I'll give you, um, my rationale for why we would need that. It's one thing to put a door or a roof or a window in a building that's new. It's a different thing if you do it in a historic structure. Many times, people do exactly the wrong thing, and it creates more problems. And we really wanna make sure we don't do that to any of the structures that the county owns that are important to the history of Jackson County. We also wanna know from these folks how we can get grant funding? What other types of funding that we don't know about, but they're familiar with? Maybe there's additional partners that could come into this in addition to silos and smokestacks. We just don't feel that we know enough as a commission to advise you. We'd like to get this help, we'd like to be able to answer those very good questions you're posing with, with folks who do this, that are experts and have, um, taken a look at the building, given us this proposal to help us get started on moving through that process of understanding what we need to do, understanding what it's likely to cost, where we could get some funding to get started. That's what we'd love, love to do.
It's my understanding, if you don't do the repairs or the changes in so that it meets the requirements of the historic preservation, um, they get off of the list.
Yes.
Longer, no longer, uh, uh, historical site. So you have to really follow their guidelines in order to, to the, to do this work. And if, I think if the Historic Preservation Commission, they'll say need somebody from the outside to come in and assist them, I think that's exactly what we should do.
Yeah, I think it's important to keep them on the list, so they're not, I mean, once they reach a certain point, they're just, they're just gonna collapse or whatever.
Well, I'll tell you, when they had that open house, I worked out at the, at the, I was saying the same. And we had all kinds of people stop there to go through it and wanted to know why we weren't open more often. Well, that's manpower, but I'm, I'm totally in favor of doing the having the investigation done and getting the information on how to restore and what to do and how to, how to pay for it.
I would be in favor of that too. Is that a motion?
Yeah, it is a motion.
I would say it.
A motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you have our permission to do.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support. We look forward to, uh, continuing to work with you on these buildings. Have a good day.
In that motion, does that mean that they can adjust their budget?
Yes. That was the motion to change the budget, wasn't it? Cause that was, that was.
So what I've got is to approve the Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission request for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three budget amendment and signing the agreement to perform an evaluation of the Jackson County Insane Asylum by Heritage Works.
You got it perfect.
That is.
That's exactly what Larry said.
I just wanted to make sure that's what Larry said.
I believe that's exactly what he said. And seconded that, this is what was said, it was so good.
Couple words I changed, but the other one.
Thank you.
Joining us.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is Lynn Meetinger. Just kidding.
Johnny got it done already. Morning. So basically, coming back, calling up on a table motion that we had several weeks ago. Mike was supposed to reach out to Ash and Hanson's office, which he did, and you got a report back saying we're overthinking this, or what did she kinda say?
Well, I, I, I think we're probably overanalyzing what we, what we need for information, what we were looking for, and we were a little gun shy of going into it that we wouldn't have enough information, and she said, you know what, submit it. That if they need more, they'll come back and ask me for more, so that's kind of what.
So then Larry was supposed to reach out to John Hanson, which he did. John got ahold of me, um, I'd finished up the, um, justification for the state. Um, just put some stuff together and they wanted it, I was kind of trying to get it to do it the next two days. They needed July thir- or June thirteenth, and this was like the ninth or tenth.
They sent the money a month before to Kansas or someplace in Kansas, but that was, that took them a month, but they wanted our stuff in a day.
So basically, they wanted our stuff on the tenth, so they could review it. Finally, I just threw it together, sent it up to him, I said, send it to FEMA. So that's what we did. Um, in the meantime, I did talk to John. Um, we did discuss the, um, Davis Baking Grants, um, Buy America, Build America, and kinda talked about, there's enough there to buy product. You know, the walls, the cable, the electrical, to get to your grant estimate. And he said that he didn't have no problem tracking that down to the bottom dollar.
And to itemize that.
Right, to itemize it to meet the.
So he was actually really helpful with putting numbers out there or telling Lynn he could get the numbers.
He started, he started building the, uh, E O C grant, cause what I did, I submitted the sheriff's overall, um, budget.
The plan.
Bid, plan. The state didn't want that, they just wanted the E O C, wow. We can't throw that together in two days and talk to John, he's halfway through, I said, forget it, I'm gonna put three hundred fifty thousand on there, two hundred sixty-two grand, and this is where the extra money's coming from.
And that's what. I had several representatives from Hanson's office call me, and we had some discussion, and I let them know, I was rather upset with the process that you okayed this months ago, and now you're coming back and want more information, which we already had given you the information we thought to get approved, so. I mean, it's basically now, I think it's more FEMA that wants the information.
Well, the state was requesting, which they sent up to FEMA. So now FEMA is gonna evaluate it, and they can't tell me how they evaluate it, whether it's single-source grants that they review first or some multi-jurisdictional grants that they review and send back. So the next step is, rather than to pursue this, is that if we do get something back from FEMA, we'll correct it, get the information that we need. Then once they approve it, then you're gonna probably gonna get a, a letter of acceptance, which is gonna be in your guys' hands to sign.
No, I mean, I, I just couldn't. I mean, it actually, I believe that we're on the right track, after speaking with the individuals, and they were, they were pretty prompt about calling us back, but, you know, the whole process itself is seems to be just. It's a government process, so that's where you're at, so. It's hard to leave that kind of fund on the table if we don't pursue it.
Absolutely.
And all that.
Well, I, I appreciate it, I, I've been through conversation with you, I know you were in conversation, but I appreciate what the work that you spent at it anyway, cause it's it can be frustrating when you're dealing with some of them processes.
So I mean, we're here the thirteenth or fifteen days into this, they spent a week, but who knows if they got it.
That, they want theirs yesterday from us, but they're gonna get back to us the seventh.
Whenever they damn well.
Well, that's, that's, I'll receive it today, and they'll wanna turn around in two days. Yeah. So that's why, that's kind of why we're here, we wanna close this ti- option that you have on the table. What, what do you call that, a note?
They have a table motion.
They have a table motion to move forward with this, you know, understanding that John's gonna have all the itemized stuff out to meet that rules and recommendations of the grant.
I would make that motion real forward, I think we did our legwork and we'll go from there.
Second, first you have to move the table, take it off the table.
Oh, I would make a motion to take the table motion off the table.
I'll just say that, do that.
Aye.
And now you can go ahead with.
Now I'll make the motion to move forward with the process.
And I'm taking a great motion to move forward. Motion to move forward, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll be in touch when I get stuff back and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yeah. Have a good holiday.
Yeah.
You guys too.
I tell you not to get too much sun, but I think you already have.
That's natural, one day I, I get dark, so. See ya.
Yeah. We'll recess for a minute till Becky Chaven gets. This time we'll reconvene, and we're being joined by Becky Chaven, human resource.
Hello. So last week I was in with the jail administrator, Andrew Long, where we had kind of discussed staffing models and some of the issues they're running into with the high inmate counts and transporting and staffing the jail. And they have requested the addition of one more full corrections officer. Um, they currently have seven full-time corrections officers plus the jail administrator, and then they have the one part-time person, and the rest of them are P R N. So we're seeing the P R N employees, there's two of them that are working more than full-time hours, they would like to convert one of those into just a full-time position, that way they can staff them accordingly. Um, they rotate twelve-hour shifts, so they have two people per shift, two shifts per day. Um, so they're just trying to provide more coverage, um, in the jail and keeping the inmates that need to be on the road, on the road, so. I didn't know where on last week, I just wanted to keep it on the agenda to see if you had any questions or thoughts, or if you wanna make a decision on that, if you need any more information.
Well, to me, it certainly makes sense, such, instead of paying the overtime, this such, have somebody on staff.
We're paying it one way or another, so let's just go ahead and make it a full-time position.
I would make that motion.
Second, motion in a second to upgrade the one to a full-time position rather than part-time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carrying.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And then. So, sorry, I was typing. Um, since Becky is here, I would also like to bring forward something that, um, we have been in discussion with the state auditor's office when it comes to our travel expenses. This is specifically in regards to lodging, when county employees go to meetings and such. The state auditor's office would like us to adopt a policy in regards to lodging. Right now, our policy pretty much just says you can do whatever you want. I will give myself as an example, I was in Dubuque three times last week, it was the, um, auditor's summer conference, it was held in Dubuque. I drove back and forth for three days to Dubuque instead of, um, getting a hotel room. A hotel room probably would have been a hundred and twenty dollars, there would have been a three hundred and sixty dollar expense to the county. I drove back and forth, it cost about a little over a hundred dollars, I think it's in today's clothes, I think it's a hundred and two dollars. So bringing this forward, we have county employees that, let's say there was a meeting in Clinton. You know, should that employee be allowed to get a hotel room in Clinton, or do we say to the employees, you need to, unfortunately, you need to drive home? Um, I got home at about ten to ten on Thursday night, it didn't kill me, it was okay. I think my drive was thirty I don't know, thirty-three, thirty-five miles, I think is what my drive was a day. So the state auditor's office is kind of forcing this issue, this is something that we've always been questioned on the audit. And what we've kind of talked about is, we would like to put a radius of sixty miles. Um, that would mean that if you had to go to Cedar Rapids, I think Cedar Rapids is probably farther than sixty miles. But Davenport would still be within the sixty miles, so if there was a meeting in Davenport, we would ask that the county employees not get a hotel room, but drive back and forth to that meeting, and the auditors, when they talk to us, they would like us to put this mileage in just so it's clear now. Just in visiting with the office, the question is, does the sixty miles start from the courthouse, or does it start from your house? Um, as far as I'm concerned, it should start from the courthouse. And that is, yeah, so that's why we put it in this way. Um, we also asked that county employees, I think we're all going back to Des Moines with them in August for our next conference. And we do ask that employees ask for that reduced rate discount when they make their hotel reservation. Some.
Reduced rate.
You get a, you get a county, a county rate, government rate, government rate. Yeah, so we asked that, and part of this is then asking for that same government rate when you get a hotel room in these, um, for meetings and such.
So if this comes from the state, do they have a standard radius that they use, or is there a standard that other counties or somebody's using, or public entities are using, cities?
Well, you know, obviously, we get our audit done by the state auditor's office, and because they work, you know, all over the state, the state themselves does not have a radius, so I think it's up to the individual counties to make that determination.
When I was living on the road, I said that we'd stay twenty miles away from home, because then I knew where they were.
Yeah.
It was worth it.
Right, no, I get that, yes. Um, and that's, so we're just, go ahead.
Yeah, they're just wanting us to be responsible and spending taxpayer dollars, and what that criteria is.
Know what that radius is, that seems fair.
We thought, we thought this was pretty logical, that sixty miles from the courthouse, you know, your home in Bellevue to Cedar Rapids is gonna be more than sixty miles, that might give you.
That would contain the mileage, but not to the motel.
Well, as far as, yeah, as far as an overnight stay, so that's why the courthouse makes the most sense, that if everybody goes from the same location, you've got your sixty-mile radius from here. The other thing that was added to this was the code section eighty-four-five A that was adopted in January in regards to human trafficking, that we are required to check the status of training of the hotels before they stay, so we did add that at the bottom of this, um, travel.
And I see that in there, is that a standard question that I have to ask now and make a reservation?
You do, in order to extend public funds. You do. In order to extend public funds, the code says you are, you are to certify that they have received their required training.
And if they have it, we can't stay there. Well, you can stay there, but we're not gonna pay for it.
Guessing that excludes some of my good old homeboy, you know?
Well, and even like the kind of the conferences that you go to from most ISAC and all of those, before they can book a hotel, they have to make sure those certifications are met.
You know what they, yeah. They should actually have to say that we are certified.
I I I honestly believe that this is.
Most of them have it on their website because they want your business so that maybe they go to make your reservation or like I said at the conference made the hotel.
Well, there's been articles in the last couple of months of the paper about this kind of thing, and I'm sure they're all gonna comply with it. Otherwise, they're not gonna get the business.
It's just, we need to do this, I mean, for our sake and because of what the state auditor's office has requested.
This also updated the mileage. That was already.
Is this an actual item on your portion or is it just?
It's actually isn't, it is an action item on my portion. It's the very last one. Um, but because Becky's here, I thought we'd just discuss it now.
Okay, so you're okay with taking action on it right now?
I have a motion in a second to approve the uh section sixteen.
And just to make sure, not to interrupt you, Jack, just to make sure. So this policy will be effective as of today or as of July first.
I'd say July.
July first.
Is that gonna make a difference to the state as to when we had it adopted?
I would just assume that we make it effective today. Yeah.
Oh, you would? Somebody going somewhere this week?
No, it's not in this fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, that's.
That way we'll be compliant.
I would make it effective today, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the um travel expense effective today. All those in favor?
Hi, that includes the radius.
The sixty mile radius and it includes the fifty-five cents per mile and effective today. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, you too.
You know, it looks like we've worked our way to Lisa.
I have quite a bit today, so.
You do.
You've got two sides, as a matter of fact.
Two full sides.
Yeah, I do. I do have a few things to say today. Um, I need a motion this morning to approve the minutes of the June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. And the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two board proceedings as written by Human Resource Administrator Becky Chason and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second. To approve publishing the last two board sessions. All those in favor? Hi, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Ten fifty-three cents. Okay, so two weeks ago I asked for a handwritten warrant. We were trying to take care of the. Last final payment for the mental health fund. Then last week we said, no, it didn't happen. Um, and what we're doing today is we're actually having an extra claims period. To to specifically do this and any other claims that need to be paid in this fiscal year. As I said, I was in Dubuque last week with the auditor's meeting and in visiting with. Um, the auditors that I uh visited with. Nobody is doing this the way that it's being done in our district. So this is what David Farmer, the way that he wants to handle this money. Um, some counties, I've heard different ways how they're handling this. It'll be interesting when auditing gets done. Um, what the comments will be from the auditors.
Well, I I can understand that because some of the, some of the mental health regions, they pooled their money immediately. So they didn't have any in their accounts at their local, so I I can understand.
I talked to a county that was a fiscal agent. They had already dispersed the region money back to the counties months ago. Uh, it's been decided that the money is not being dispersed from the region to the county. So we are going to send our money to the region approximately hundred ninety-two thousand. And then what will happen is we will pay those expenses from the general fund. And the month of July, August, September, we will pay that from the general fund. We will bill the region and then the region will send the money back to us. So that's the way that right now, as of today, that's the way that the region is going to work with those expenses. Um, there's one employee with a hundred percent and then their employee with a thirty-four percent. Then we would have those expenses of maybe there's mileage or a hotel or a meeting or whatever. And we will be billing that back to the region so they can reimburse us back. So that's why the claims listing is so high.
I know normally we do our claims every two weeks. Is there? There's nothing set in stone or this is how we have to do. We can do claims every week if we want to.
Correct. That's correct.
So we're just tidying, tidying up our end of our year and with the rest of these small claims and.
Yes.
I would make the motion to approve.
Second.
Another motion in a second to approve the claims in the amount of one ninety-seven, two seventy-nine, fifty-three. All those in favor? Uh, hi, motion carried.
My next two items on for my agenda um have to deal with. Project risk cost sheets for the Together We Build project and for the law enforcement center. Actually, those, those bills for the law enforcement center were actually paid last week because John had emailed Shelley. The, the actual claims. So in last week's claims, these were paid. So he actually overnighted it and when I got back from the meeting last Tuesday, everything was on my chair. So today I need a motion to approve the invoices for fifty-five thousand to SA Architects. And twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents to Midwest Construction Consultants. For a total of eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents and authorized the chair signature on the project cost recap. For the Together We Build project.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor. Hi, hi, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve the invoices for five thousand, three hundred and four dollars to Rick Widner, A I A. Nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and four cents to Midwest Construction Consultants. Two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to Rock River Electric. And thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents to Bill Bruce Builders for a total of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents. And authorized the church signature on the project cost recap for the law enforcement center.
I'll do a group, second.
The motion in a second to approve. The law enforcement center expenses. All those in favor? Hi, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine oh five dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two. Certifying delinquent leisure-like sewer assessments to the county treasurer for property tax collection in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Motion to approve.
So this will be a tax sale or tax?
It will, it will be attached to the.
A couple of years ago, we went through this whole roundabout about, about the B C I A. Who was responsible to collect it?
Well, there's still a thirteen thousand dollars plus of delinquent assessments. But because we're doing it before July first now, it allows us to get this on the taxes.
Yeah, that would second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Hi, motion carried.
The next resolutions all have to do with um the new fiscal year that is uh paused. So I need a motion to approve resolution number nine oh six dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two. For the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three appropriations by department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Hi, motion carrying.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine oh seven dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two. Naming Jackson County Officers Bank Depositories for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. For the recorder and sheriff that designated banks to deposit revenues held in their trust accounts.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine oh eight dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two, naming Jackson County Bank Depositories. For fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the financial institutions to be depositories for funds collected in the county treasurer's office. And just as a side note, we did increase, you know, we had amended that resolution. Oh gosh, has that been two months ago, maybe? So we did include those increased amounts. I will be applying for our second payment to. For the ARPA funds, probably here within the next month and a half. So it does include those higher amounts.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion in a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine oh nine dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two for the designation of county bank for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Designating Macokka State Bank for county warrants and payroll warrants.
So move.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Hi, hi, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine ten dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two. For issuing county warrants and allowing the auditor to issue warrants without the prior approval of the board for payment on freight, postage, express, payrolls, water, lights. Telephone contractual services, witness fees, school instruction, registration fees and mileage.
So move.
A motion in a second. All those in favor? Hi, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine eleven dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two for an inter-fund operating transfers. Authorizing the auditor to periodically transfer sums from the general basic fund and the rural services basic funds to the secondary roads fund during the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
All normal course of business, correct?
It is.
So move.
Second, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine twelve dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two for township officials reimbursement. With a compensation rate of twenty-four dollars per meeting and for clerk's bookwork of twenty-five dollars per month, not to exceed three hundred dollars per year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Which one are you looking at?
It says in here twenty-five dollars per meeting. And I thought you said twenty-four.
No, twenty-five, twenty-five per meeting and then twenty-five per month not to exceed three hundred.
All those in favor? Hi, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine hundred and thirteen dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two for the payroll for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine fourteen dash zero six dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two. Returning five thousand dollars in appropriations back from the maintenance department to the board of supervisors, which was transferred on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. So this would be for Marty's department. We went back, we took a look and we gave you your money back. Didn't have to do that, but we thought that's what we said we would do if we had the money. We had the money. We're now transferring it back to the supervisors.
And what was it approach then?
Actually, we were short on payroll.
That's right.
So.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Hi, motion carried.
And my last item there was the discussion possible motion on the lodging and mileage and we've already taken care of that. So. That's all that I have for the board today.
Next one that comes forward is. Luann Koki, Sergeant Inspector Assistant.
Start with the calendar, sweet. Um, at ten thirty this morning, there wasn't workforce office hours. If anybody wanted to go, I don't think the green had time for that way it looks.
You know, I'm gonna butt in there.
Sure, okay.
Uh, I know that apparently from my information on my iPad. Kelly Brown and David Hire and Ben had a meeting with some of them from the Iowa workforce. Because they've been talking about. This not having the individual down at the uh Haycap Building um any longer. Um, and I, I know that they're upset about that. Um, my problem is um serving as Cleo for the workforce. We've had, you know, for months we have discussed how many people are coming in. And um Jackson County hasn't had more than one or two come in um each time that they're here. And you know, we keep, I mean, we all drive down the street and we see health wanted signs. At a lot of different places. Um, and uh I know that Kelly and David are upset that that decision was made. But um we just felt that. It's a lot of money for those individuals to come here and just sit there and. I mean, they can bring other work from other counties with them, but uh we just didn't see that it was cost-effective to have them become. And so that's why I kind of wanted to be at that thing at ten thirty, but that's fine. I can express my feelings to Kelly. Anytime I want to, but um I know that there were some of the counties that were kind of upset about it. Um, and especially down in Lee and Henry County. And so I think some of them are going to keep at least. For an indefinite amount of time, just to keep track of what's coming in the door. But um we just felt, I mean, I, 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 I was in agreement. I, I was dead set against them taking it away. But now that, you know, we just keep month after month after month, it's been the same. One or two people is all that show, show up to even get information. And um they can do it online. Um, they can go to Davenport. They can go to Clinton County. They can go to Dubuque County if they, if they choose to, but um. I don't know what the outcome of this meeting's gonna be today, um but that was the rationale that the CEOs. Reviewed and looked at and how they made their decision. Um, and it, 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 it did, it absolutely flabbergasted me because before. Lisa remembers and maybe you guys remember when they were going to the library. And how the library staff, that's one of the reasons we gave them some additional funding is because they were doing so much of the work for the workforce. Well, then they moved it from the library down to Haycap. First of all, Dennis Boyd didn't even know how Haycap was. And I says, well, remember new view? And so then he, then he knew. But um and I told him, I said, I don't think your publicity has been really um out there to let people know where they're at. And they, and then they sent me information about how much they had spent in advertising and promoting the various counties. Um outreach, so. I don't know. I don't know what they'll discuss today or what they'll decide, but that was the rationale and why. We chose not to continue having somebody here in Macokka.
Is there a sign down there for that?
That wouldn't do anything. They're looking on, they're looking online anyway, but the point is, Jack. I mean, you're involved with this. You've always been involved with the Iowa Works and they know that. Do they have to plan their meeting at ten thirty on a Tuesday morning when they know we meet on Tuesday morning?
Well, Luann and I have discussed this often. Um, how do I say this? Um, I don't think Miranda's really concerned what my hours are. And she is, she's the CEO of our workforce and, and Luann has contacted her and said, you know. We have our board meeting there or, you know, Jack has another meeting that day. Um, could you move it to a different time? Well, and, and it's like last night, I was supposed, originally we were having a meeting with workforce and. An hour later, and workforce has never done it an hour, an hour later was my early childhood Iowa. And now they've started planning, I have early childhood Iowa at four o'clock and I'm supposed to be at workforce at five o'clock. And so the last three times that I've done that, I had my iPad in my car driving home from DeWitt to Macokka. And, and I, I, I turn it on and get it all set up and I do that in the parking lot of the uh Annex in DeWitt. And I just tell them when I get there, uh when I get online, I say, I'm on, but I'm not gonna be talking because I'm just listening. Because I'm, I'm driving. Because usually it's the same night that I have Together We Build at seven. So you know, it's um, I, I don't know. They certainly don't do it for the Cleo's uh convenience, but. Um, and I've talked to, I've talked to Miranda about it, but she says, well, that's when it's convenient for the majority and there's eight. And I've talked to, I've talked to Miranda about it, but she says, well, that's when it's convenient for the majority and there's eight counties, so. I don't know, whoever takes over for me can work on it. Now I'll shut up and wait so you can go ahead.
Oh, okay, alright. Um, two o'clock this afternoon, you do have a CEO meeting for the workforce, but it's a Zoom only meeting for Jack. Wednesday, June twenty ninth at seven AM, there is a community health meeting for brain health by Zoom also for Jack.
And Lynn Bulbs is, is on that committee too and we meet with. Scout Warren's wife, I can't, Jen, Jen Warren, she's kind of coordinated this and it's trying to come up with. Ways to let our services be known to people that there are services available for people with brain injuries and with brain problems, so. It was, it was a, last night, it was a good meeting and the only bad part about it is seven AM, you have to be up dressed and ready. So it was, it's, it's an interesting group.
Okay, um. Also tomorrow night at six PM, the supervisors have a work session with the leisurely, leisure lake property owners association board. To talk about collaborating on nuisance issues, so that is that Lori said downstairs in the community room tomorrow night.
So that's here.
Tomorrow night, correct?
And that's been confirmed.
Lori confirmed it.
I also have it in on July seventeen, which is a Sunday.
Yes, and we asked them to please, that's their regular meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, but no, Lori confirmed it this morning. She said she's got, she, you know, she got six, at least six board members coming to tomorrow night's meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay, Thursday, June thirtieth at ten fifteen, you're all invited to go for lunch for the Jackson County campaign for grade level reading. That's down at the Kirsten Hall. And you're supposed to meet her at the doors at ten fifteen so she can take you on a tour. It's from Joanne Evans.
Ten thirty.
Ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen. For you, ten o'clock.
Yeah. Nine forty five.
Also on Thursday from one thirty to three o'clock, if you're interested, is a webinar on becoming an innovative transportation community from the. Iowa Economic Development. We don't have anything for Friday, Monday, July fourth is the fourth of July, obviously, and the courthouse will be closed all day that day, celebration of the holiday. It will reopen on Tuesday, July the fifth, and that's our next regular meeting on the fifth at nine AM. Then after you get a three o'clock, Larry has a meeting on the green space redevelopment.
You know, I was here for the, when we had that interview last week. When I left, they went past the green space and there was just a ton of people and all music going on and I didn't hear a thing about it.
Must have been Thursday. It's, it's on, yeah, they always, first is the first Thursday of the month.
Well, they have a concert series.
They have a concert series. And Dewitt has the same thing on a Tuesday.
No.
Tuesdays, so.
We have a good crowd.
Yeah, and then usually there's a vendor there selling sandwiches and stuff.
There was a truck there.
And sometimes too, but no, it's, it's, it's a nice event. Bring your launcher and listen to the music.
And grab a beer from the brewery. Take that from you. There you go.
Okay, um. The bulk of my business today is going to be fireworks permits. I've talked to Nancy before she leaves today. We're gonna have to do some publicity, obviously, on fireworks permits because I've had three requests for fireworks permits in the last three days. And we're supposed to get them two weeks ahead of time. So I have three fireworks permit requests this morning. The first one is for Matt Franzen on Highway sixty four in Preston for July the second. Looking for approval of these permits in your packets.
Has he provided before?
A couple of years ago, yes.
I guess I'm just looking at these and I'm looking at the next one in particular, but I mean, they're really close to state highway. And I know coming down the pipe that, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that do not apply for fireworks permits, that is my wish.
Yeah.
But I know that talking to some of the fire departments and EMS personnel, they're concerned about some of this because. They classed these fireworks in different classifications now and you have to actually have a license for some of these, so. People need to, I need to, we probably need to follow up a little more with that with whatever comes out of them meetings. You know, to, to see where they wanna go with it and, yeah. It'll be interesting. I would second Larry's motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the fireworks permit for Matt Franzen, all those in favor? Motion carried.
And I have had one person who was shooting up fireworks. The very first year we did permits, had a state trooper come tearing into his yard. And confront him about what he was doing. And he pulled out his permit and showed trooper, the trooper said, have a nice night and left, so.
Which is the way it should be, if that's the case.
Yeah, if we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, yeah.
Well. Yeah, in a sense, you know, like you say, we get these permits today and they wanna shoot them off in two days. Who's does it? Who's got the time to go look at this unless we can look at it just like this?
And there's no time for notification.
You know, I, I, I have my concerns with some of these places because I can't see around there. I mean, I know this place, so I know that there's not a livestock confinement close or something like that that can, and it affects that. And we had a situation a year ago, last year, the year before, you know, he says, I got half a million dollars for the livestock in this building and you're sharing that out, you know, so.
And what we, and what this was started this was that livestock was frightened and was injured because of a fireworks display that the neighbor set up that they knew nothing about. So we asked for time to give people notification that there's gonna be a fireworks display so that the sheriff's office knows there's gonna be a display there. Go, I ask them to go talk to their neighbors personally, which sometimes doesn't happen, but we post them on our website as well and talk about it in the meeting, so. The big point of the permit is to get notification out to people that there's gonna be something going on so they can prepare. The neighbors can prepare and know what's going on. Three days is not enough.
You just, you don't move three, four hundred head and you don't, you, you don't put earmuffs on them either, you know, so.
Right, so unless, maybe we have to do something different, but this is the way it's been since we started, so.
Excuse me, please.
I'm also looking for. A motion to prove a fireworks permit for Tyler Tharp. Who's on Highway sixty two in Makoka and then Andrew Karin district also for July second.
And, and that's up on the screen, of course, where the X is, and again, I mean, we're close to sixty two. There's really nothing else around it other than his neighbor, Mr. Sergeant and a tower and, you know, but. Again, there's passerbyers and there's. That close to the highway, so I guess I would think somewhere in the future that we probably not have to look at this a little closer.
Because you're gonna have spectators too out there along the highway in some cases.
Oh, no doubt, yeah, I mean, yeah, and then it just makes another issue.
So we may have to change it, but have to.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, we're no different than anybody else, I don't suppose, or other counties or whatever, maybe, I think we're doing our due diligence, but. Yet requiring a permit, but what all we want is going forward, you know, things change.
Right.
I would make a motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second to approve Tyler Harps request, all those in favor? Hi, motion carry.
And Jack, I, we're going to amend the agenda.
Well, we have an additional fireworks permit for Betty Miller that also lives on Highway sixty two. Which was a late arrival.
Called me after four o'clock yesterday.
And we have another one. We have another one. I know him, but I can't think of his name. Was here this morning.
Oh, Tom.
Tom Tigrey, no, Tom Yearwood.
Yes.
He has a permit for fireworks display.
On June twenty fifth.
But he said his fireworks got wet. So he wants to set them off on his rain date rather than having set them off on the twenty fifth. And I guess I, I told him I didn't see that that would be a problem.
Well, if we approved it and the rain date was already on there.
It was, and that's when he's, that's when he's going to do it.
And it did rain on it, right? That's how they get wet.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the question is, is the new permit, are, are you allowing that according to the timeframe? I guess we've allowed others, so.
I didn't see how we could turn it down since they brought in, paid their fee and have the, all of the information and the picture of where it's gonna be shot off at.
She said particularly she hadn't heard anything about it. Well, I haven't advertised it every year, but apparently we're gonna have to do something because. It's, it's kind of fallen off people's radar. We need to do that.
Well, then we, yeah, I guess it's our due diligence to do that also, but you spend more money on that, on advertising than you do with. Permits are worth, of course, but.
Right, yeah, it's not a money maker.
Not a one win win, no.
But we can do the radio, that doesn't cost us anything to do, to go on, just talk, if we do that.
Do you have, is that up for action too, Jack, then the permit, I'm so moved to approve.
A motion is second to approve the permit from Betty Miller, all those in favor? And I, I motion carry.
Figure that one for my house.
Yeah, so. I think that's all I have unless we want to talk about GIS at this point, that, but then undermine in case you wanted to talk about GIS position.
If it goes into a work session, we can still take action if we don't adjourn, correct?
Yes, can.
We just recess.
I think we need to make a decision when we're together, we keep, can here.
That's what the work session was, but who's it's about?
Yep.
This morning, so.
And.
And I, I, I really would like to see if there's an opportunity this week. For us to get together and discuss the county engineer. I think we have some decisions that we have to make and how, in what direction we might wanna move.
So more information on that.
Pardon?
Do we have any new information?
Well, not that, not that I'm aware of, but I think that, you know, the new, new year starts next week. And I just think that we need to decide what we're willing to do and what we're not willing to do.
I, I agree. I, I think we, we were, we had agreed at the last, at the last interview that we need to obtain a little more information. But I don't know where that stands, so I would.
Would we want to meet? Tomorrow night before the Leisure Lake, just maybe Becky would be available to meet with us and just discuss what our thoughts are.
I, I would guess I'd like to ask her if she obtained any more information or if, you know, Todd had obtained any more information first. I don't know that we can make a decision until we get our information.
Um. I will talk to Becky and if I think it's, there's enough information to. At least have a dialogue, we will, I'll have Luann set it up. And so that we have our twenty four hour notice.
That's all I have for you.
Two. This, this not on the agenda again is the. Did we take that back off the interpretive center or the welcome center?
It's up there for discussion, I think.
Have you talked to surveyor, the sets of pin or where?
Yeah, he's doing it this week.
Okay. Tom Devine's in here this morning and. He told me that they had everything cleaned up and I thought when he said that, or. He said they had everything ready. I thought maybe he was talking about, they emptied the welcome center. But that wasn't the case and I said, and I told him that I says, I was down there last week. And I inventoried the stuff that was in the building, wrote list, I gotta get Luann to type it up. So that you can both have copies and Lisa can have a copy, but the thing I, I, the thing I didn't count were the boxes and boxes and boxes of brochures that are down there. I can't imagine how many thousands of brochures are setting in boxes. But he said they were back in and they did another cleaning, because I know when I was down there, there were a few fly, dead flies flying around that were playing around. But, and then I did talk to him about the artwork that's there. And I really think Marty, we need to have you and maybe Mike go down. And take the artwork off of the walls and bring them to the county. They were done by the women over by Bellevue who are no longer around. And they would be county property. So we'll bring them here and decide what we might, they're beautiful. They're absolutely beautiful. They're all metal, metal heart. And they're mounted to the walls. There's four of them, three rather good sized ones and then a smaller one. And then I think the board will have to decide what we're gonna do with those pieces.
I think one of them should go to the guy that used to live right next to them or just about three hundred feet away, but.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Well, we'll bring, give you one of the screws in the back.
No, I, I, I would agree, you know, Jack, I, I, I appreciate that you went down there and took that inventory. I've been through it. But we're, we'll, we're gonna need to continue to clean it if we don't move forward here. We, we get the pin set, we're gonna get our parameters and, and put it up for sale and. If we don't get a bin we wanna take, that's fine, then we'll move on somewhere else, but we can't just let it sit there, it's just gonna deteriorate.
No, absolutely, absolutely, and. I've never tried to look for a key before. And that took me a while to find it. Yeah, I finally, yeah. Finally, finally, but I just thought you had mentioned that we needed to do an inventory, so I went down. And went through all of the floors and looked at the stuff and there's a lot of stuff that just needs a dumpster.
Yeah.
But there's some antiques there too, so.
Oh, yeah, some of them on the old school desk too. I mean, I, what do you, I guess there's.
And there's a, there's a lovely conference table upstairs with a, a poster. Chairs on rollers that could be used somewhere.
Where did that come from?
That's the conference table they always had.
It's been there for, since it was new.
Oh, yeah, it's very, very nice.
And then there'll be conservation meetings there, you know, at least once or twice a year.
So anyway, and the, the. The Tourism Association, I was part of their last meeting and, I mean, they know that it's going to close. And they know that we still need to see what we can work out with the. Interpretive Center as far as I know, they've said you could have an office or a desk there and I don't know how long or how often he'd be there. But I know that the Stop and Shop or whatever the place is in Bellevue or Subul. Will put brochures out and put a sign out and we'll have the welcome, the interpretive center as a welcome center also, but. We just have to decide what we're gonna do with the material and the stuff that is inside the building. I did talk to Bonnie Mitchell a little bit about some of the stuff that's down there and she says. At the main museum, they don't have room for more desks and, but the, the upstairs desk that I assume is the executive director's. Desk on the second floor is very, very nice, so I don't know, it's pretty good size, so I don't know if Tom's gonna. Wanna take that out to the interpretive center, that I don't know, but. There's some, still some decisions we're gonna have to make.
When you talk about Bonnie, does that mean the place at the fairgrounds, you mean that there or where else?
The, the main museum, that's, that's the fairgrounds. That's. On the second floor, they do have a school, schoolroom like area. I don't know if. I don't, I, I just, I, I don't know where they would put it. So I'll have to make some decisions on that. Yeah. Okay, Marty, come forward. We're gonna be in work sessions at this time.
I would appreciate if you just like the camera roll, if you're okay with it.
Okay, that's fine with me. People like to see, oh, and I also. Talking about, I think it's time for, honestly, I, I, I do believe this because I've had lots of inquiries, I don't know about you two. But people are really missing the fact. But people are really missing the fact that they can't watch us. And, um, if they don't have computers and all of that, um, they liked it when we had our meetings recorded and shown on local access.
It's still available, ain't they on YouTube? I send them every day or every Tuesday.
That's getting done.
It's on the local access channel?
Not live.
It ain't live, but you're on there. We, every once in a while, we watch.
I was gonna say, I mean, this is being recorded and it's taped and then Bjorn converts it and does what he needs to do and then you send it to.
Send it to Emily in Bellevue and then I think Katie Paul's running it, maybe I'm a focus now.
Well, I'll have to talk to him. I've had several people that have come up to me over the last month or so.
They can go to YouTube and watch it too, right?
Yeah.
Some of these are pretty old people that might not know how to do that or.
Yeah, I don't know what the city does, yeah.
But she thought, she always watched it on TV when we were.
Well, we never were live live on TV.
No.
So I guess they can still do that if they don't have access to a computer, but what else do we do?
Well, she said, I, I, the one in particular said, well, I heard you got new microphones and I said, yeah, and she says, well, why didn't you get cameras at the same time? And I said, well, we talked about it, but we didn't.
This will be on our YouTube channel this afternoon. Okay, I mean, yeah, soon as, yeah.
So, I mean, I guess with that being said too, Jack, I mean, these people will have to have a smart TV to do that.
Yeah.
You know, so it's.
And I would.
You can just jump on your.
Local access though.
Okay.
I don't know why, after the city changed something, I still send it.
So I'm not familiar with the local access channel. Do they have a schedule? Well, can you go to guide and look to see?
Yes, they will have something on the screen. So I'll have to, I'm, I'm gonna talk to Josh anyway, see what, what, how they advertise it or promote it. Yeah, cause I know these people said, we really miss not seeing you guys on, on TV. And I go, great. So, okay, Marty, go ahead.
They know you was a star, huh?
Well, you know, way back when, uh, Corandus had their, um, TV and appliance and there was a restaurant next door.
Yeah.
Marilyn and I were eating in there one time. And this little boy, I suppose he was maybe three or four years old. And he came over and he looked at me and he says, I see you on TV. He said, you're a star. I just absolutely cracked. It was so funny.
Well, you should know somebody's watching it.
And this parents came over to apologize. I says, no, you gave me my laugh for the day. So now I'll be quiet and you can talk.
Okay, if you wanna go ahead, go ahead. Uh, anyway, um, we, uh, out here by the monument was a big hole because they tore the concrete out. And just before Memorial Day, I got a couple loads of line and put in there, leveled it out, tucked some pipes down in the ground for the flags, so it looked somewhat better than it did, uh, made me feel better. Um, over the penrose, uh, I explained that we're having water problems over there. So I had the gutter on the west end of the building changed out. I moved the downspout around to the south side of the building so that it, unloads there, then it goes east down that way. And then the one that was on the west side, we moved it and then turned it from going point west to point north. So it goes across, so it goes down that way. That way it keeps the water away from the building. For now, we're still probably gonna have to change a couple, probably twelve by twelve slabs as a cement there because I think I explained there was a fuel tank there and we dug that out and it had settled till the concrete's leaning toward the building. Then it goes down and comes out in the floor. And eventually it'll get worse and worse because all the sand or the dirt's coming in the building. Okay? Any experience with this jacket, mud jacket?
No.
I only advertise the foam one too.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost is. I actually have some myself that I would try to, if I knew it worked and it wasn't too expensive rather than terribly.
It sure looks like it works like.
Well, if you tear out concrete, if you jack it up and it's, and it works, it sure seems like the thing to do.
My concern there would be that it would still settle.
Well, I think the product that they use is, is, serves that purpose of taking up that void.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, if you don't get in there, dig out what's losing muddy, that foam that's hard would settle on the dirt underneath it. It's what I, would my, would be my concern. Because that, that tank was like five or six foot in the ground, you know?
My thought is though, what you've settled is already settled. It lives on settling or it could settle a little more, but I would hope to think that this product that they use, maybe we should do a little investigating on it, see what the cost is.
Okay, I will do that. You're talking the foam stuff, right?
You can do a mud jack too.
Okay.
I just sold the motor off my house.
What's that?
I have a mud jack.
Do you?
I sold the motor off because I figured I would never use it again.
There you go. Yeah, that's why I don't.
Who'd you sell it to? That's what you're gonna call, see how much it costs.
No, that's why I don't ever throw anything away because right after I do it, I need it.
You don't throw anything away?
No.
I know that, I see that.
We realize that, Marty.
You can believe how many times you go back and dig it out and use it.
But then you gotta find it.
Well, I know where I wear that up here.
Boy, you're a comedian today.
Well, I'm serious. Anyway, uh, from the winter time, the grass has been killed at a couple spots. Um, solely but surely I'm seeing them. I got the one down out here by the, the, the entryway here. Uh, the, the brand new Kubota has several, has several antifreeze leaks out. I do believe, uh, it's been a couple weeks now. And it does not leak anymore. Usually you mow on it, the tank was down about this much and then there was antifreeze on it. There's a little valve on there that you can shut the heat off that goes to the cab. And I found out that's what was leaking and, and all it was, is the nut needed to be tightened up to, to.
Seal it up.
Yeah, so I got that fixed. Um, the, we stored the lawnmowers up at the care facility. I brought one of them down and I put it in the shed at the jail site. That way we don't have to run this lawnmower from here over there. We just drive down there, hop on that lawnmower, mow it. Uh, cause it's kind of rough terrain and I would really wouldn't want to damage this lawnmower right yet. Okay. Um, at the care facility, you guys okayed it, um, with the lights, but myself, the electrician and Jared walked around, there's, I'm gonna say eight lights that are not working or or work for a while, then don't work. So, uh, I was up there yesterday and they are being installed. Hopefully it gets that done.
While we're talking about the care facility.
Yep.
So I did go up and check and look at the field that you.
That was my next thing here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, the drain field, uh, the gentleman that was gonna do, correct me if I'm wrong, I said it was too rough for him to do it, right?
Well, we already talked about the dosing.
Okay. Okay, so I went up there and killed it with the, the big concrete, a little sprayer in the back. And then I borrowed a disc from secondary roads and used the tractor to care facility and I, I dissed it this way, this way, this way, this way and that way, and once more this way. Cause it was buck. And I picked up, I don't know if you've ever seen the bucket on the tractor up there, it's good size. I picked up about a bucket and a half of rock. Um, just from this big to this big, uh, there's one in there that, that I couldn't get out with the bucket. Um, I did make a request from secondary roads to go down there with the something and dig it out, but I haven't heard bad from them. Um, so then I come back and I went down to secondary roads again and got a, I don't know, eight or ten inch I beam that had a couple of chains on the, on the thing and I hooked it to the tractor and just drove around leveling it all off.
When did you do this?
Um, last week.
So it's nice and level, what you're saying.
Yes, it's really close. I, I actually think it, but the thing is, after the rain, I went up there and looked at it and I still need to pick up another half a bucket of rock. Uh, but I think we could seed it without bulldozing it, is what I'm saying. The secondary roads really didn't want to get on top of that with the dose. They're really kind of scared of that. They hate to damage it and I'm sure all of us would. If you go by there, look at it.
I did, so I was there, I looked at it and I thought it looked fairly decent. I could figure, I could see that there wasn't a dosing done, but I thought, yeah, well, this looks almost good enough to seed.
Yeah, there's a couple big humps of grass there that I'd like to get out of there, but other than.
So I think he probably tore that up when we tried it the first time.
Right, right.
So I will have him go by and look when he goes by again and see what he thinks, if he can get in there and, and level it up so they can seed it. I mean, the portion above it is a little rough also, so it's not gonna be like.
Well, this is more of this than the big dips and, you know, because there were holes and then when we first started this, you know, they were about this wide and that deep. Now it's just a gradual like this.
Well, I'll have him look at that and see what he thinks is feasible and we get in there. I'd like to have it done now that it's dead and down to the time, you know, we don't wanna wait till it starts growing again.
Correct.
Are you done with the care facility or not yet?
Yes, other than my equipment's still up there that I gotta bring back.
Okay, so I noticed as I was driving out a washing machine or a dryer or something in the, oh, in that building you straightened.
Well, it's the ones from here. It's the, we bought the washing machine and the dryer was good, so that's where I put it.
Okay, I just didn't wanna collect something that we did.
Well, I told you, I hate to throw stuff.
I, that's my point. I could see that washing.
That's what it is.
Roads.
Okay.
Put it back in a corner or something.
Okay, I will do that.
I'll just put it in. Inside.
Well, it's.
It's in that.
It's in the shed. It's inside.
You're never putting doors on that building. It's an open face building to the south or, yeah, I would say so, yeah.
Um, let's see, I did spray the cow yard and I am gonna mow around the shed to kind of make that look a little better, but I haven't got there yet.
Huh? You said that last year.
Well, I did that. I mowed it last year. I'm gonna mow it again. Uh, fixed the lock on, uh, recorder's vital record door, uh, keeps turning. I got that taken care of, I think. The air conditioner here, a relay went bad and then it dropped the leg. It's three phase, it dropped one leg and then it burst the motor out. That's why we didn't have air for a couple days, our air. I called them in ten minutes, they were here working on it, which I thought was very, very good. What's that?
I said, that's for sure.
Yeah, he was over at the family dollar, I believe he's there. He, he's a gentleman out of Bellevue. Really good at, uh, trimmed the hedge out here. Uh, sprayed the weeds at the parking lot down at, uh, Headheart and ACAP. I do like the backpack thing that works like once you get onto it.
The one that you refuse to use for two years?
And he won't, he won't, I did it.
It works good.
Huh?
They work good.
Once you get them on, it's a little tough, especially if you try to fill it full, it's a little, you need to set it on something.
Well, you need to set it on the bench, yeah.
Right, but, but down at there, there was no bench. I had to do it out of back of the bench.
Still work, I use a post.
Okay. Over at the sheriff's office, there's a wire cage over the light in the drug tank, apparently somehow they got up there and ripped that apart. So I took it down, welded it, painted it, put it back up. In the other little small courtroom, the, uh, all the receptacle covers were, were tore off the wall. I fixed all them, put them on, I put metal ones on it this time instead of the plastic one. The panic button in what we call the back cell, um, button was tore out. I put a new button in there. I have a work request from the auditor, assessor's office. They got two fans that don't work and one fan that kind of comes on when it wa, or doesn't come on when it wants, but goes off when it wants to, so then they got up and they wanted, was wondering if we could get three new fans for them. These are, I'm gonna say are somewhere between fifteen, probably fifteen years old. I just, uh, I want permission before I buy them and put them up. Yeah, yeah. But I just want the okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, also I have another re, work request in the exercise yard of the jail. The corner posts have a, a pipe in the middle, but in between the two corners, there're no, there's no pipe there. And I got what, two or three?
Probably three.
Three requests to see if we could put that pipe in there. I talked with Lisa about this. Um, you know, it's gonna be fairly pricey, I would say, to have it done. And I was wondering if we shouldn't hold off until we get the new jail, but that isn't my decision.
What size pipe do you have?
What's the pipe for?
Uh, well, it's for the corner post, I'm thinking it's to hold the corner solid. You know, but it's not in the middle because it's not, to me, it's not needed there. There's one on the bottom and there's one on the top and, you know, they can't get through it. But there, um, it ain't the sheriff requesting it, it's just one of the, one of the jailers. And, uh.
So is there a security issue with the sheriff?
Well, I'd have to talk to him about it. I can't see how it would be, but I will talk to the sheriff about it and see what he says.
It's not like a pipe rotted off. It never was there.
It was never there ever, yes. You know, and I don't know if they think it was there and it's gone or what.
So if it's easier for him to get out the gate, why don't they just use the gate instead of the corner?
Well, they could, but now we, that gate is locked with a chain. Um, and that's about it, unless I forgot something. Do you have anything for me?
So the question is, is there a dollar threshold to say if it's, if it's X amount of dollars and less, Marty should fix it, or if it's X amount of dollars and over, he, he needs to come back.
You mean in general or?
You mean the pole or the?
Well, for the, to repair, whatever they want done to upgrade the work area. Let's say that it's a thousand bucks. You wanna spend a thousand bucks, maybe it's only a hundred.
I'd say a couple hundred.
Let's do this. You talk to the sheriff if it's feasible and talk to his personnel and see if something's feasible or if they're having major concern of security or something and let's talk it over a little bit and they could, I think you guys can make a logical decision, right? I mean, we, we have, I would hope they don't have to come back and approve a thousand bucks if we got to fix it.
Yeah.
Lisa's here, so you, I mean, if it's used pipe or whatever it is, or what kind of pipe, I don't know what it is.
I would think all that you need is a couple piece of pipe and the thing that holds it on the.
Go out to Herschel.
Yeah.
Get some, a couple pieces of pipe.
Well, I think you need to go to like a defensive place to get it.
Well, Frank?
No, it's just.
I've got a whole bunch of two inch pipe.
I think this is like inch and a quarter. I will, this is what I'll do, I'll measure it and then I'll let you know. All right?
But if two inch pipe works, might be just a ticket.
Well, what, I don't think, the only thing I would be concerned is, is to get the end that goes on the pipe, so you put the strap around the pole to hold it on.
I've got a fifty-five gallon barrel full of pins.
Okay, I will get ahold of you.
Okay, so all kids aside though, they do have a lot of material out there at, at junkyard that galvanized pipe.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I mean, check.
Okay.
It's laying there. They've got some really nice stuff out there. I mean, aluminum planks and stuff like that, you know?
Okay.
I mean, different.
Me here, junkies?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I haven't been out there for a while.
Okay, we will let you know as things progress with the welcome center.
Yeah, if you want us to run down there and get that stuff, we will.
I would, I would like that. I would like that artwork out of there.
And you say there's four pictures and it's.
They're not pictures.
They're metal.
Metal art.
Is it, is it downstairs in the classroom?
Main floor.
On the, in the classroom?
Yes, there's three like here and there's one on the, uh, the south wall.
And how big do you think they are?
They're big.
So it's gonna take both of us?
Yeah.
One guy doing it?
Take some straps to tie them so they're not banging around with your gun.
Okay, you don't want them all banged up then?
And I would like, I would like something in between them too.
Yep, we got, uh, the moving, uh, like the chair.
That'd be great.
We should give him some keys to the machine shed out there.
Who's that?
John Hanson is here. Have you talked to him?
No. Really did. Mike's taking tables and chairs down.
Okay, well.
Somebody told him to do that. I don't know who did it.
John, he wants him for work. He's gonna be working here for the next few days.
Speaking of that, you didn't do any partitioning out there. Speaking of that, you didn't do any partitioning out there.
Well, this is where we're at now, I got ahold of the sheriff about. A month ago.
Yeah.
And he never got back to me, so then I went to the chief deputy about two weeks ago, told him we need to do that and, yeah, we'll do that, but I've never heard from him.
Well, John's not real intuitive about having it closed in, but I said, we're not gonna heat that whole building throughout the whole winter if we can partition. I mean, we looked at the certain size of partition we were gonna put in there, twenty by eight something, weren't we?
That's why we put that one door.
Yeah.
Towards the end so that.
Yeah, it's.
They could come in that door.
Whatever we talked about, that's what the plumbing is in there for.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I.
We could heat that room a little better for him and have enough room. And maybe if you talk to him about that, or the key, you can also ask him about the signs in there.
We were gonna have this, the, the plan was that we were going to have him sign out certain keys, but. Um, I think we had ten or fifteen made.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't know if we're ready to do that yet or not, we just need to have him coordinate with Mary and.
We locked it because I put a lot more in there.
Yeah.
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 That way. Nothing gets in streets of a coker, but that road out that way is miserable, wow, it is.
I come around that way when I come in.
So Summit Street, wow.
I mean, there's times like over the rough part here because.
And Jacobson Drive and Summit that way is, is terrible too. I will go down, we'll go down, where, when we get them back, where would you want them? The, the artwork.
I'd put them downstairs here.
I would say that we'll let Lisa know and we'll discuss it and see.
Probably in that room.
No, that's not gonna happen. We, that's our next project is to get the, the arco basin cleaned up, that's, so we will need you, cause we're going to be. Removing.
Secondary roads is having a meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And I told them to look at their little drawers and stuff, to see if they wanted it and if they wanted, I was told they could have.
It goes.
All right.
Absolutely, it goes. Yes, we're, we're at a point now, we've got all of our Lexus stuff, I have to do taxes.
I'm gonna make a, a decision on that table, if it's not feasible, let's see the user or get rid of it.
Okay, uh, and the stuff in the north lobby, I was kind of waiting, I took that. Out of here and they put the hang down stuff there and I told not to throw away quite yet because some of the gals in there. Do not like what they got there now, so that's why I haven't moved that, cause I don't wanna take it and bring it back, okay?
Okay.
Other than, have a great week. Yeah, okay. I will.
Okay. We'll recess for a minute and then we'll have. What can the crew come over? We're meeting with Kuz and, uh, Jess Tracy about the GIS, Becky Chapin is with us and. How we're gonna move forward, I guess, so. I guess Jess, can you just tell us what your workload is, um? I, I know that, uh, you do the bulk of it and we just kind of need some direction.
Yeah, I mean. Since, over the last month or whatever. I mean, I'm spending quite a bit of time, a lot of this because I haven't done a lot of this stuff before, so I'm trying to figure out how to do it or. I'm just figuring out my way around the software and all that. So I don't know, I mean, I can, there's been days where I've spent most of the day doing stuff and then other days when I haven't done. Much of anything, you know, so, and I can't tell you what a normal day would be like in the future, but right now. It's a long time since, yeah.
Well, I know she had a project here, it was last week. That she was working on, and just that project she spent, she thought about three hours on, but. I, I wouldn't do that, project was even coming. The day before came and I couldn't come in here and said, I have no idea what she's gonna do tomorrow.
Was that the one that I talked to you about?
And that was because I had to figure out how to do, I mean, I could do part of the, part of it, I knew I had to do the shape file portion, I didn't know how to. Add the other stuff they wanted to it. And. I mean. I've. I had to get, um, some nine-one-one stuff. Just compliant to be put in the system, um, for uploads and. Cause their format changed, so.
John just walked down the hall.
And you wanting to come back here?
Just tell him that we, we.
We'll be ready to talk to him in ten minutes.
But some of that kind of stuff took, has taken quite a bit of time, just figuring out how to reformat. The, um, the data, so it goes into this, this system. Correctly now that they changed their systems and what.
And one day you were taking a class, that was a couple of weeks ago, I don't know what that was, that was part of.
Were we approved for that? I don't know, I don't know, yeah, I was assuming, Mike, do you know?
How do we know if we did or we didn't?
Yeah.
Checked in the mail.
But it's like, now it's a quarterly thing, I believe. Every six months.
Every six month on it.
I, I haven't submitted any new data, I did it the, the one time and then. I just, I'm, I was kind of holding off, so I was supposed to be doing.
I guess one of the things that I'm gonna. Say is, the project that she was doing was for. A particular, um, agency. And those are the types of things that I think we should charge them for. I mean, you said.
I mean, if it's not related to the county or, you know, even the city, I, we had one.
The Jackson County Economic Alliance requested some information.
Well, yeah, they have a budget.
And I don't, I mean. Yeah, I don't know how that's normally been done in the past, but it was something that had to go to the state, I believe, to, they wanted a shake file, but they wanted. Some other information and I, I just, I had contacted Schneider. To see if Shay could help you, but they never got back to you, so. Cause I mean, it could have been possible faster, I just.
Chad figured it out himself, basically. See, they wanna charge too if they help.
Well, they'd like to do it, right?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. But I, I, I just meant, as we move forward, if, if we stay with this system. I think that, you know, if somebody asks for a specific job to be done. I think there should be a price tag to that.
If it's not a Jackson County entity, I would, I would tend to agree with that, cause we think that in the past that. Maybe a former GIS was doing a lot of the work, I mean, a lot of work for the city. And for somehow I feel that they should have. Maybe contributed then, you know.
Well, we always said they were, you know, if other communities wanted some information or wanted something done with GIS. That there should be at least a nominal fee to, to provide that service.
And I guess, I don't know how other GISs are running other counties or what they do or.
We don't know.
Yeah. So, this was the proposal. And as I understand it, we're still in negotiation, right? And I guess we're still maybe looking for a trial period, I, I would propose. Uh, I mean, I don't know what anybody else thinks, so we can have discussions, I would propose to pay just. This. Stipend or whatever you wanna call it, ten percent of salary, whatever you wanna call it, and that would propose to have one other paid person maybe there, be paid. A stipend for support. I know you had talked one time about that, we all gonna have time in it, we gotta learn how to run that plotter and that and that, well, that's. Really no different than if you buy a new computer, you gotta learn how to run it.
Yeah, but we don't do that otherwise. Yeah, but our office don't do it, we wouldn't have to learn how to do it, cause we're the assessor's office, not the GIS office, that's what I'm saying.
But it's a new piece of equipment, so you have to learn how to.
Yeah.
But that's, that's just a proposal or a negotiation, that's the tone of the post.
You know, Janelle's been doing the. Gets, gets the surveys in, Janelle does, and she's been plotting them. For a year and a half now. Never did that before. And our office isn't supposed to, but we're helping out, so we thought. And. Now it seems more like, well, you're doing it so you can keep doing it. That's not.
Again, this is a trial period and I would expect some documentation of some kind and see if it's working for you or not working or. Your input to say, yeah, I will, no, I won't.
So I just have a quick question, so since we've been at this, since like April-ish. It, has there been impact to the office phone calls, foot traffic? Have you had to rely on the other gals for like support? In relation to this, or how is that working?
I haven't noticed any.
We don't even, we don't have the phone number even ringing in at our place as far as I know.
At this point, I was Janelle, so I would rely on, you know, to look at certain things. That, you know, she might know more about than I do, that she was doing the parcels and all that. And she's always, and she's been doing the, you know. Um, forest reserve, I mean, the, the main like land stuff and the, and the personal sports and condos, so.
So she's been doing that since our full-time GIS was no longer, is that about when that transitioned, yeah?
Yeah.
I guess I'm wondering if you'd be willing, I don't know what their threats are or anybody else's thoughts, but if you'd be willing to try that, just see how it works and try the ways.
What, what, what's your proposal again, you're cutting everybody out, but, but what now?
Well, I, I would say Jess is gonna be doing the ninety-five percent of the work, so I would agree to her salary.
Yep.
And, and I would agree to one of the other three as a stipend for support.
Yeah, I don't like that. I, I'm one that has to be in the office and I'd not, I'd not wanna come and just depend on one person when I know it's gonna be all three of them. But Mel maybe not too for sure. That'll be. There should be more people. That just put it all on one person, then I, that just doesn't work, you know, it's my, you know that. And this is something that is not the assessment job.
We realize that, and we realize that you are, um. Helping us with the transition and where it transitions to is the thing that we have to decide.
Right, and I don't know how much is maybe, I told Jess, maybe I'll come in here in three months or six months and say, yeah. We don't need anybody but Jess working on this, we already have Janelle working on, so I know we're gonna need Janelle. We don't need any bells, we're not getting any map calls, the phone isn't ringing, but we don't know that since we don't have it. It is out there that that's our office. But, I don't know. I decided to split up my office and give somebody more.
I, I guess, I, I agree with Mike in the fact that Jess needs to be, uh. Compensated for the work that she's doing.
She's the one that knows that.
How we deal with the other staff in the office, um, I'm not really sure how I feel about that.
No, we're putting a lot of, I mean, this was a position at one time. And now we're trying to fill it with ten percent of that. Position salary. So I feel that there's extra work coming in there, I guess we still don't know how much.
We just don't know.
Yeah. That's, that's why I'm saying just for a trial period.
I don't like, I don't like that, but like.
I, I.
Like you're telling me, I don't like it like that.
I don't want you to, you know, I don't wanna clash in here anywhere, you know.
At this point, I would say if, if you're only. Gonna. Do one other person, then it should, you know.
I, I guess my question is, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, are you willing to try that for, before a trial period?
Yeah. I mean, yes, well, I guess I feel like I have that.
Yeah, I, I did it.
For like the last two months, so.
So we need to make a decision and, and I respect it. And I can say.
I guess I don't even like it, but would you go along with it for a trial period?
Or not, I might say we're, we're not gonna do this at all in our office, I, I just think that. You know, if you just wanna split up some of the, I just. Maybe Janelle and Jess are gonna do the brunt of the work. I don't know, but I don't wanna have other ones in my office saying. Um, I'm not answering that call because it isn't part of our office and I'm not.
Well, and I don't expect, uh. Employees to do that, I don't expect employees to come and say. If I employed somebody and I said, well, now we got a new piece of equipment and now we're gonna do this, he said, I'm not gonna do it, I said. What do you mean you're not gonna do it, I just told you you were gonna do it, but. If, if personnel can decide what they're gonna do.
Fine, you can do that. I can, and, and I will, if that's why I ended up having to do it, say, okay, we're doing this, this is the way it is, and there will be no kickback from anybody. I'm just trying to say, I'm trying to make it fair for everybody, that's what I was saying.
So what is total cost if we do like your plan, what, what's the dollar amount? It's right here. Well, we did. Seventeen thousand, zero forty-one thirty-three. That included. Like a high version training for a thousand.
Yeah, we just could do it your way. I'll try it, I'm not liking it, I'm not like it all. I already got Jeanie signed up to go to a school to help her. Be able to read legals. Better than she can now. Part of that was because, and I told her in my office, I said, well, why didn't you sign up for this, because if you're gonna be helping do that stuff, it's all legals. I took the course already, I said, you should take it and you might be able to help out. With something that we don't know what, because we don't know what. But. If you just wanna do this. Go ahead and make your offer and. I just think it's, it's not. Right. I think it causes, uh.
Between anybody, our department is, we're trying.
I personally believe. That anyone in your office. Excluding you. Who is working with, uh, GIS should receive some kind of a stipend. Depending on the amount of time they're spending, and that is. Unknown to us at the present time, we don't know whether the other ones are gonna spend one hour, or they're gonna spend ten, or they're gonna spend fifteen hours. In a pay period, working on GIS, we know what Steph will, or what Jess will be working because we have a little bit of an history with her.
We know what Janelle's doing because.
We don't have a lot of history with the other employees.
Because they never done it before, I mean, we don't know.
But with that being said too, with her doing, I mean, just doing more of that work, it throws more work on the other.
Look, I'm trying to make a point at you, if there's stuff that I don't know how to do, I, when I go home at night, I, I try to look it up.
When she does.
So when I come back in, then I have a better idea of what I'm.
But it's still time that you're.
Yeah.
It's still time that you're using. To do the GIS chat.
And there's no, there's no argument that. What we're paying Jess, or what that proposal was, is obviously fair, probably isn't even enough. But it's that part we have no. No porn with. Janelle, um, I know she's worked on her stuff, been working a long time, isn't that she's not, she's gonna stop doing it? I just think that, you know, that was my. Thinking on what. Should be done, I don't know, we can, you know, if we try for a few months and come in, you know.
I mean, there's the thing, here's, here's the thing, we should try it for three months, whatever it is, and you could come back, well, no matter how it's working, you could come back and say, this ain't work. You know, I want, I want this or, you know. I mean, we're gonna have to listen to what hap- what your report in three months is gonna be anyway, so. I mean, we're gonna have to trust your staff and trust you and, and say, you know. Tell us the truth and this is what it is, we wanna do it or we don't wanna do it.
Yeah.
Would it be fair to maybe recommend that since Jess will be the one doing GIS? She be in charge of. What the other gals do and document that and attach some sort of, like if it's ten percent of their hourly rate right now and every two weeks she can, if she's had to. Utilize them, so we can get a feel for three months of where this is going. That way they are getting compensated if they are doing something, but there's no flat amount out there when the unknown is.
That's basically what I was, that's basically what I was meaning, we need to try to. Come up with numbers of hours or. Assignments or jobs that they're doing besides Jesse, so that we know the time commitment that we're. Placing on our office next door.
And, I mean, if you have something that you need to do for your regular job too, if you need to assign that to somebody, that should be part of that.
And I mean, if you have something that you need to do for your regular job too, if you need to assign that to somebody, that should be part of that. Part two.
Like what I was talking this morning, there's some things that she does that I think she could. Possibly have Jeannie do, because Jeannie seems to catch on some of this stuff. But it won't be specifically this, but it'll give her more time to do.
Just any work, well, this being. Wish totally be documented, and and I agree with starting to pay it right away, not not wait for three months.
The thing I hate is putting more work on you and and trying to figure out how much time they're spending.
Well, it's hard to do, because I'm, me and Jess have a system. Don't make any difference, I'm gonna do it, but I go out in the field and do things. She does. Part, when I come back, she gets some of my notes. I've been trying to keep some of those notes away from her, doing it myself. So she don't have quite as much to do from from me. And there's one reason why I'm doing that, is because she's been busy with this, trying to fix, figure out, she always said, well, I don't know quite how to do this, it takes me a long time. Well, you're still doing it. So that's the kind of stuff that I don't know how you would even.
Kind of be part of that, if you're doing some work that she normally does, that needs to be written down on it. And maybe we can come out to a a balanced thing that's. You're not taking so much time to regulate it and track it either. And maybe we end up at the same percentages we're at for all, for everybody in the office. I mean, seventeen thousand, I'm okay with that, if that replaces a GIS person. To me, that's cheap. If we get the work done without, you know, screwing up other stuff.
Right, that's the only thing that, well, that's the thing I'm gonna make sure has to happen first. The assessor's office has to keep.
And we realize that, Buck. We we know that that's your job. And 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 the county is dependent on you doing your job. So.
I'll have you do it over again, I'd come in and say, we will do this for X number of dollars. And the assessor will decide how it's gonna get split up. Cause then I'd at least have the ability to say, okay, Janelle, you're working a lot on this. I don't know. Jess obviously is.
We're still negotiating, Buck.
Well, I just think.
Do you have a number for that, or?
Well, that's where we come up with that.
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand when we're talking about this, I just should have presented it different. Cause I can't tell you that everybody's gonna do. That one.
And every week will not be the same.
Yeah, maybe it'll be nothing.
And I I I wanna make sure that. The employees are compensated for the work that they do.
Not, and they go somewhere else, and we don't need that.
No, no, it's not. It's not like used to be, there's some huge salaries out there. When you can um. His job up at Joe's, whatever place in Buick, flipping burgers for seventeen dollars and fifty cents an hour. Friends, it is, they, Joe's, it's friends, they got a big sign up there, seventeen dollars and fifty cents per quote. Okay, well, anyway.
Do you wanna think about it and come back next week and give us what?
No, I'd like to make a motion here and move on, so I'd I would make the motion, what I propose is to pay Jess for her. That you have listed here. And Janelle, that's my motion.
What's the stipend for Janelle?
Fifteen hundred.
And what's the effective date of this?
Well, she's doing it now, I would say immediately.
I would recommend for Jess to go rush, I mean, she went through. This up the day Christina walked out, so I would definitely make it retro for Jess.
I agree.
I agree.
And I don't know specifically what that date was, if it was the second week in April.
And I'd like to propose that for a three month trial period.
Starting today, for three months.
So you want the salary to be retroactive to sometime in April? Correct? Is that what, is that what you're, is that what you're?
That's what it was, yes.
Do you have any idea?
Probably in.
I don't know what day.
I wanna say it was April eighth, I think, like the eleventh, I think, was kinda, you were already into the nine one one. I think that was one of the first things they had reached out, so. But I think it, I think her last day was the eighth of April, her last working day.
So make this retroactive to the eleventh? Yes, is that okay with the board? Is that part of your motion, Mike?
For both of them?
Yes.
I have an email from Mrs. Ross, it's April twenty-fourth, oh, April twenty-fourth.
There you go.
Okay, so are we saying the following Monday then, or what, when? So April twenty-fourth was a Sunday. So the twenty-fifth, so is it okay with the, with Mike, your motion is for April twenty-fifth?
True.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Okay, this includes Jess and Janelle?
Yes, yes.
And going forward, do we need documentation from Buck for?
This is a trial period, that's what it.
Buck ain't gonna be real excited to do anything when you start leaving the boss of the office out of this equation at all. You haven't talked about that, who's in charge of what gets done in the office, who's gotta make sure this is gonna get done? And it's like. His opinion doesn't count, plus we're taking him off the table. It's my office, it's my employees. I'm the one that oversees them. And I'm, you just can make your motion. But I still have to be the one in charge of making sure that all the work gets done.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion to include Buck.
Okay.
So, um. Let's do this, are you saying that the, my motion did not get a second, is that what you're saying? Yes, then it dropped to the floor anyway.
Now we make the motion for the three of them to get the citation.
You can cut mine if you want to. I'd be fine. I'm just saying, I don't wanna sit here and say that I could be in charge and. Not be in charge, be in charge, but we're not going to. To compensate you at all for being in charge.
And what was that stipend for Buck?
Two thousand. Is that what your, is that what your motion is, or are you?
I didn't have the number, but yeah, whatever was on there. What were the, the other ones for fifteen hundred?
Yeah. I would be willing to cut mine in half.
Okay, make that motion then with with that proposal, I mean, this is, this is what we're talking about, here's peanuts, to be honest with you. I mean.
Peanuts, but it makes, it's, you're talking about people's feelings and things that we're dealing with.
Well, I don't know what that's worth.
I I know, but I, it's just worth keeping a happy office.
I I get it, and if it's a thousand bucks, that makes you happy, I'm not opposed to it, but.
It isn't just me.
Let's just see what happens.
Believe, I believe that we should go with seventeen thousand. And have Buck decide how its division divided amongst the staff, because. I can't see us doing it for three, if five of them are going to have some role in running that GIS with. With Jesse. I think you should just give them a blank, this is what it's gonna be, seventeen thousand dollars, you divide it amongst your health, depending on. What their workload is strictly with GIS.
And maybe we wouldn't use all seventy thousand.
That's right, you might not.
Okay, so.
Can I interject just a question? So we have a payroll issue here.
Yes, we do.
So we need to be very clear of what the, what do you think?
Does it get more complicated tha- that way?
Correct, I mean, um.
Not till tomorrow, when you tell them what it's gonna be.
Hang on a minute, yeah, hang on a minute. I don't want it to be complicated for anybody's office.
Be clear, so when this gets on a bit.
Well, I mean, I guess the difference in that is that if we know Jess is gonna be a flat ten percent every payroll regardless, let's say that's a standard. Are you okay with that? Is that kinda what you're feeling?
Well, yeah.
So she's always gonna get the ten percent, that's easy. So let's say Jeannie spends two hours, what is she gonna get paid for those two hours? Her hourly rate for two hours, cause she was strictly dedicated to GIS, but then she was also receiving compensation as the assessor's employee for the sake, you know what I mean? So that's just, that's how that complicates things.
Okay, that gets complicated.
Okay, so first of all, there is a motion on the table. To pay Jess her salary and to pay Buck a thousand dollars and to pay Janelle. The fifteen hundred, if that, if I'm correct of what you said, your motion was, is that motion still on the table?
It hasn't been seconded, so you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second.
So you're, so, so I'm clear for the minute, so it was a motion by McDevitt, a second by Steinis. To amend your motion to include.
No, no, my motion died for a lack of a second.
Motion, so I, can I have, then your motion died for a lack of a second.
That's right.
Yes. He's not making amending it, he's making.
Said, so that's why I typed that, so I'm just making sure.
He's making a new motion.
So. So the motion is by McDevitt, second by Steinis to.
Pay Jess her proposed, proposed salary of the ten percent. Pay Buck half of what it proposed for a thousand dollars. And to pay Janelle the fifteen hundred as as was proposed.
Only effective April twenty-fifth.
Sure, yeah.
Any more discussion?
Can we come and revisit this in a few months or something, because?
This is included as a three-month trial period, is that correct?
Like that.
That's what we were talking all along.
From this date, three months, not going back to the.
And I would certainly hope that you would keep track of the hours.
We're gonna try to.
Of the other two individuals, so that they can be uh fairly compensated as well if they're actually working for GIS.
So we have a motion on the table yet?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, I know, and until you say is there further discussion?
Well, I am further discussion. I have the right to do that.
Yes.
And what was your, Jack, what was your discussion? You wanted to pay seventeen, seventeen thousand total, is that?
I just wanna make sure that all five of them are compensated. At some point, if it's not now, after the three-month trial, I wanna know how much time the other two employees are spending. With GIS, because they need to be fairly compensated as well.
And to tell you right now, if we can make that work on the payroll process, I just can't answer that. Could I tell you next week? Yeah. But it can't tell you right now, no.
And and then, and that's fine. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I I agree with Jack, I think everybody should be compensated.
Seeing no other conversation or comments, all those in favor of a motion as presented, I.
I.
Motion here. And we will expect in the course of the next three months that. Maybe we'll have some information as to the time commitment.
And I would like to thank you both in advance and your staff for willing to to trial run this thing. And have a happy holiday.
Yeah, we will, we'll get, we'll get this worked out, as long as everybody knows in three months, we might come in and say. We need changes completely.
Then you could, then you can write up your new proposal, whatever.
I'll know a little more what they're doing and who's doing what. And I do appreciate Larry, the fact you're saying that, you know, somebody's gonna be doing more. So Jess has more time, I appreciate that, because, yeah, that is GIS stuff, but it's sure freeing up somebody who's.
Exactly.
Who knows what they're doing.
And we value your employees' work.
And and I do too, and the staff here too, I mean, they, I don't wanna put them all in turmoil for the state audit. I know Lisa loves them. All right, let's see us.
Yep, thanks, have a good holiday.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the meeting today? You have a motion to adjourn?
Some move, second.
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.